We're back in the saddle. Yeah, that's right.
We'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome our listening audience at WCBU as well as Cable Channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Ali. Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Graebb. Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Rigenbach.
Here.
And Councilmember Ruckregal.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Ruckregal.
I move to approve the minutes of the joint city council and town board meetings held on December 10, 2019, as printed.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Rigenbach, are there any corrections or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
The first item is a township item. Twenty dash zero zero one is a request from the town officials to approve the December 2019 actual expenditures and to approve the January 2020 anticipated expenditures for the town of the city of Peoria.
Thank you. Trustee Ruckregal?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve. Seconded, Councilor Trustee Seer. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. And that motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're at the consent agenda. Twenty dash oh oh two is a request to approve the 2020 annual city and county joint legislative agreement agenda. And there is a handout on your desk, and it's on yellow. It's a replacement. There are items added to that agenda. Twenty dash oh oh three is a request to approve the change order number two for a one-year extension of the 2018 storm sewer lining contract with J.C. Dillon to February the 12th, 2021, and to authorize the city manager to execute the change order for a total budget amount of $200,000. Twenty dash oh oh four is a request to authorize the city manager to enter into a letter of intent with the efficiency network in the amount of $62,000 for an investment-grade audit of the city's street lighting system in order to determine the feasibility of entering into a guaranteed energy savings contract to reduce energy and maintenance costs related to the system. Twenty dash oh oh five is a request to approve an agreement between Methodist Medical Center Proctor Hospital and the city of Peoria. Twenty dash oh oh six has two parts. A is to approve the 2020 fiscal year landfill budget as adopted by the Peoria City County Landfill Committee, and B is to adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria 2020 to 2021 biennial budget as it relates to the solid waste fund to adjust the approved budget adopted by the Peoria City County Landfill Committee. Nineteen dash three ninety-four is a request to adopt an ordinance amending Article Five, Section 30 of the Code of the City of Peoria relating to towing of private vehicles duties and requirements of tow operators on the list. Nineteen dash three ninety-five is a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A, the Unified Development Code, relating to commercial light industrial uses as special uses in the Class C2 large-scale commercial district. Twenty dash oh oh seven also has two parts, and this is the request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff for the following. A is to adopt an ordinance rezoning property from a Class C1 general commercial district and Class P1 parking district to a Class C2 large-scale commercial district for property located at 7327 North Galena Road. And B is to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class C2 large-scale commercial district for contractor storage indoor and outdoor for property at the same location, 7327 North Galena Road. Twenty dash oh oh eight is a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance rezoning property from former public right-of-way to Class C2 large-scale commercial district for part of the property located at 7327 North Galena Road. Twenty dash oh oh nine is a request to adopt an ordinance establishing a residential parking permit program on the 100 block of West Beverly Court from North Lynn Street West to the alley east of Knoxville Avenue. Twenty dash zero ten is a reappointment by Mayor Artis to the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors with a request to concur of Eugene Daniel. Twenty dash eleven is an appointment by Mayor Artis to the Advisory Commission on Human Resources with a request to concur of Sherri Cannon. Twenty dash twelve is an appointment by Mayor Artis to the Fire and Police Commission with a request to concur of William Spears. Twenty dash oh thirteen is an appointment by Mayor Artis to the Tourism Reserve Fund with a request to concur of Timothy Spears. Twenty dash oh fourteen is an appointment by Mayor Artis to the Advisory Commission on Human Resources with a request to concur of Kimberly McGee. And twenty fifteen is a communication from the city manager, treasurer, and finance director comptroller with a request to receive and file the month-end November 30, 2019, unaudited financial report, and that completes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any items to remove from consent this evening? Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item twenty-two zero zero two and twenty-zero zero nine. Thank you.
Zero zero two and zero zero nine. Councilman Kelly?
Item twenty-zero zero seven, B. I'm sorry. Yes, I think that's right. Yes, that's right.
Thank you. And Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you. Item nineteen-three ninety-four. I'm just, that's a, thank you.
Nineteen-three ninety-four. Seeing no other lights, we have a motion to approve the remaining items. Councilman Euler, seconded, Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty dash oh oh two is the annual city and county joint legislative agenda that has the yellow handout on your desk.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to ask the city manager to help me figure out if I'm overlooking their request for support from the legislature for improvements and repair to Lincoln, Howett, and Jefferson, where Lincoln and Jefferson, and Lincoln and Howett, Jefferson where Lincoln and Howett connect to it. That's something I've been talking about for a period of time, and I was, I don't see it on here. Maybe I'm missing it. Can you direct my eyes to it, please?
Thank you, Councilwoman. No, I don't believe that is on the list, so we'd be happy to entertain an amendment to add that. It would be a capital request item that we would be supporting the state making those improvements as part of their state capital plan.
Well, I'd like to make an amendment to add that. Since those are state routes, and they are very, what's the technical term? Crappy, and we can't do a whole lot about it, I think the state should come in and take care of their own property. So if you can add that, you don't have to add my technical term to it, but it's been many years I've been requesting this to be on here, and this year we need to get it on. Thank you.
We want to do that in the form of a motion, so the motion is to add that item. Is there a second for that motion?
Amendment.
Councilman Kelly seconds the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilman Montalongo? There's about three lights going on. I'm not sure. So this is on the motion. Thank you.
So I just had one to modify as well here under where it says, "City requests Imran substation relocation at Sterling." I would like added to that or a wall or covering of the substation.
So I think what we need to do, just to keep this straight, is we'll vote on individual additions to this, and then I think there might be a couple of changes to it. So the motion from Councilmember Moore is to add her item. I saw we have a second, and there was no discussion, so please cast your ballot. Okay, so that motion passes. We'll go to Councilman Montalongo's request to add, I'm sorry.
I'll restate that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Of course, it says, "City requests Imran substation relocation at Sterling." To the end of it, to add or wall or covering of the substation.
So we have a motion to add that, and it's seconded by Councilmember Seer. Is there a discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Councilman Kelly and Councilwoman Jensen are yours. Okay, so we'll go Councilman Kelly, then Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think you all received a yellow copy of the legislative schedule. There is an addition there. I believe it's item number eight. It's underlined. It reads, "Supporting amendment to the tax abatement section of the Property Tax Code to include residential rehabilitation as well as new construction being eligible for a tax abatement." Under this statute, as the statute reads today, only new construction can enjoy tax abatement, residential tax abatement. As I think most of you know, I plan on proposing a tax abatement ordinance here in the near future. However, if we could get rehabs included in the statute, and therefore in our ordinance, I think it would serve Peoria and some of our neighborhoods better than just new construction. So I therefore move to include the item as written to our legislative agenda.
It's already written and included on this yellow sheet, so it will be included as written in the motion. We don't need a motion because it's already in here.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since this was pulled, I just have a couple, two quick questions for the city manager. I just wanted to confirm on the first request, the reduce of the sales tax administrative fee. I'm assuming, is that the fee that the state started charging us about four years ago?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. And then my other question is on page two. In the middle of the page, it refers to the BLIGHT task force recommendations. I didn't know we had a BLIGHT task force. Who's on that task force?
This was the Illinois Housing Development Authority. Had a BLIGHT task force, and they came out with some recommendations that are included in this. This was included in last year's legislative program, and we're just simply trying to ask the legislature if they're going to have any language or any legislation pertaining to BLIGHT reduction that they adopt those recommendations.
Okay, okay. So it's not our, it's not the city's BLIGHT task force?
Correct.
And I think it's a great idea, so thank you. That's all I have.
Any other discussion on this item? So I'd entertain a motion to approve with the additions that have been voted upon. Councilman Seer, seconded by Councilman Ruckregal. Seeing no further discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Item nineteen dash three ninety-four is the ordinance amending Article Five pertaining to towing of private vehicles.
Okay. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick question for Corporation Counsel Peterson. Since it's been a while since we discussed this during the first and second reading, if you wouldn't mind summarizing what the changes are that are now included in this and why you've added those?
Sure. Meetings were held with the various tow companies, the police department, the city manager's office, and legal, as well as looking at some of the best practices of what other municipalities were doing. And the key changes from what the original ordinance was to the version you have in front of you were making sure that safety equipment was mentioned. There were some items updated to make sure that this was reflective of Illinois traffic laws, so things such as safety equipment for lights and lifts, as well as making sure that the drivers and operators of those vehicles that were operating the toes had their TIM card. So there were some items that were to put it in compliance with the state statute. The things that were more specific, allowing our police department some greater control over the toes, had to do with now having the company, the tow company will actually issue the tow notices, as well as some new fees. The fee schedule had not been updated since 2011. Making sure that the tow companies are required to respond to all toes that they're dispatched out on, so no picking and choosing of the calls that they want to go on, unless, of course, they don't have the right equipment to do so. Making sure that they can respond within 30 minutes, making sure that they respond to at least 85% of the calls that they're dispatched on, and then making sure that the buildings within which they operate for housing the toes and their day-to-day business operations are compliant with all codes of the city.
Very good. With that, I move to approve.
Motion to approve. Seconded by Councilmember Moore. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty dash oh oh seven. There are two parts to this, so we will need to vote on each ordinance separately. But the one that was in question, I believe, was B, was adopt an ordinance approving the special use for the indoor-outdoor storage for 7327 North Galena Road.
Councilman Kelly?
It's just a very minor change. The ordinance requires the fencing to be perpendicular to the right-of-way, and the fencing is parallel to the right-of-way. And so if we could, does this require a motion to change that?
Is that Director Black? Your understanding?
Thank you, Mayor, and I apologize for the confusion on this, but the ordinance, the first item, the first condition on the ordinance is that outdoor storage must be screened from the public view and with an extension perpendicular to the right-of-way. So it was anticipated from the start that there would be a fence that would run parallel to Galena Road, but then, as we looked at it, we determined there would also need to be a fence, a leg of the fence that would run perpendicular so the traffic going northbound on Galena would not see the stored material. So we can certainly clarify that in this ordinance.
Director Black, it's okay. They're just, that was not apparent in the drawings and whatnot, so, but that's fine with me.
So just to clean this up, we'll just do item A, motion and a second. Item B, motion and a second.
I move that item A be approved.
Okay. Seconded by Councilman Rigenbach. Discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. And on item B, Councilmember Kelly?
I would move that item B be approved as well.
Motion to approve. Seconded by Councilman Rigenbach. Discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. And the motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Item twenty dash zero zero nine is the ordinance establishing a residential parking permit program on the 100 block of West Beverly Court.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd just like to ask for a two-week deferral on this item so that I can visit with the council representative about some comments and questions that came to me from some citizens of Peoria, so we could just defer for two weeks.
Okay. Motion to defer. Seconded by Councilman Euler. Discussion on the deferral? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we're at the first reading. Twenty dash zero seventeen is a request for a first reading review of an ordinance amending Article Four of the Code of the City of Peoria relating to animals.
Mr. Meinger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item that you have in front of you this evening is a proposed change to the animal control ordinance that the city has that is enforced by the county. It is removing the Animal Review Board from the ordinance and instead replacing it with a hearing officer. We've had a very limited number of cases in front of the Animal Review Board, and this would allow for impoundment decisions, administrative control decisions of impoundments, dangerous dog determinations, and reckless dog owners to be established and determined by the hearing officer. You know, here at the city, we have hearing officers that handle our environmental and code enforcement cases and parking tickets. The county is simply looking to do the same, and from a staff perspective, we're in full agreement.
I'm kind of surprised we didn't do this years ago when they took animal control back over there.
Well, I think they've had the Animal Review Board in place, but as the cases get fewer and fewer, it's just easier to convene a hearing officer versus trying to get a quorum of a review board together, so.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yet, I'm, it's a very good idea. Just a little bit of history. I actually wrote this ordinance developing the Animal Review Board, and we set it up before we even had a hearing officer. It was set up to take those cases out of the circuit court and bring them here because they caused a lot of headaches for the judges and were very time-consuming. So I'm surprised we didn't switch it over to the hearing officer once that was set up and they started doing more than just housing cases. So it's a great idea, and I support it, and I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Seconded by Councilman Euler. Well, actually, it's a motion to receive and file.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. It's first reading. Is there any other discussion or input on the first reading? Okay. Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Receive and file. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're at regular business. Twenty dash oh sixteen is a request for the following. A is to adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria 2020 to 2021 biennial budget related to the use of South Village Tiff Fund balance in the amount of $120,000 as a match for the Federal Home Loan Bank-funded South Village owner-occupied housing rehabilitation project to be managed by PCCEO. And B is to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with PCCEO to manage the application of the matching funds provided by the South Village Tiff Fund.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I need to abstain from the vote on this item. I serve on their board.
So noted. Thank you very much. Councilmember Rigenbach?
Move for the approval.
On item A, it's a motion to approve. Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Is there a discussion on item A? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously with one abstention. And on item B, Councilmember Rigenbach? Motion to approve and seconded by Councilmember Ruckregal. Is there a discussion on this item? Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I am very supportive of this proposal, but I do have a question. I see the note in the memo that some of the city programs and services will be impacted by the addition of our duty to manage the program. Do you know how much that will be, Director Black? Or how significant?
Thank you, Councilwoman. I would not anticipate that this would be a significant impact on city staff at all. I mean, it's a relatively, it's fantastic, and I applaud the Community Action Agency and BC Bank for being able to secure this grant, but 24 roofs, the Community Action Agency will actually manage the grant, so city staff, our only role in this would really be to coordinate and administer the 120,000.
role in this would really be to coordinate and administer the $120,000 in Tiff dollars. So a de minimis amount of city staff time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this item? We have a motion and a second to approve. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously with one abstention. Madam Clerk?
We're at unfinished business. Nineteen dash three seventy-three is a request to approve change order number one for the 2019 storm sewer repair contract with J.C. Dillon Incorporated, and to authorize the city manager to execute the change order to increase the original contract in the amount of $550,000.
Got to turn it on.
Turn it on.
There you go.
All right. This is a holdover from last year, and again, thank you, Council Ruckregel. We basically, Ruckregel, excuse me, eventually I'll get this right. We had a contract, the name of the contract was simply wrong when we came before and deferred to this agenda. Everything else, the content is the same.
Okay, thank you. Questions or discussion on this item or a motion? Motion to approve, Councilman Ruckregel, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Seeing no lights for additional questions, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
If there's no further unfinished business?
Do we have any unfinished business, unfinished? Seeing none?
We would be at new business?
New business to come before the council this evening. New business, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. One of the items that I'm very excited about is the opportunity to congratulate those members of our fire department who were promoted today, and if Chief Artist could come up and mention who they are so that for the public, everybody knows who they are, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. Councilwoman, thank you very much. So today, we did have a badge-pinning ceremony for five members of the department, including myself. Along with me, Assistant Chief Jim Bachman, who's here, and if you guys, if ladies and gentlemen don't mind me mentioning the high schools they all graduated from, because every single one of these members that I'm going to mention were Peoria High School products, and I just think that's awesome, and I wish it would happen more often. So Assistant Chief Jim Bachman is a graduate of Peoria Christian. Division Chief of Operations Sean Solberger was a graduate of Peoria High School. Battalion Chief Stephen Radha was a graduate of Peoria Notre Dame, and Captain Bobby Anderson is a graduate of Peoria Richwoods.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. It was a wonderful badge-pinning ceremony, and I just wanted particularly people to hear about Captain Bobby Anderson, that he is our newest African-American captain on the fire department, and I think that is outstanding. So thank you so much. And mentioning the high schools, I think it was very important. So those who are listening, who have girls and boys who are going to high school, know that there is a career path to our fire department. And I like what you said in your talk in presenting these gentlemen, in that you said that you don't necessarily, you don't need to have a four-year degree to become a firefighter, and it's an invaluable service to our community, and I want our young people to know that there is a career path there. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chief, I think you neglected to mention which high school you graduated from.
Mayor, that's an excellent point. It's Academy of Our Lady Spalding Institute.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and other items. The second item I wanted to mention was Stacy Peterson has been working very hard on the communication method that we have been talking about, the bulletin board for the, that will be running on Channel 22. Stacy, can you come up and give us a brief overview of where we are and when you think this may launch?
Thank you, Councilmember Moore, for calling me up. If you recall, at our meeting in December, we spoke a little bit about the digital signage software that Councilmember Moore has really been pushing for us to get, to put on our public access channel, Channels 22 and 23. The intent of this was to not only make people more aware of meetings that were going on, but also make people aware of city events. And we were fortunate enough to purchase a program called Carousel, which is going to provide us with a lot of different sections on the screen to put up our social media feed and our RSS feed from the website and events that are happening. So the template is pretty much set up and done, ready to go, and will probably be going live within the next couple of weeks. I would say by the end of January for sure. One thing that we are really concerned about, though, is making sure that we have a nice balance with using the signage on public access while providing the quality programming that we already have on there. A lot of people rely on the default arts channel, which is a free channel that they enjoy watching, but there's also programs on Illinois policy, Illinois politics, and of course, our meeting schedule. So I would encourage anybody listening, if there are certain timeframes that they'd like to suggest, or they think that we would really benefit from showing this signage in certain time blocks, please give me a call or send an email. You can email me at speterson@peoria.gov.org, or you can leave a message on my desk phone at 494-8560. Thank you.
You also mentioned Peoria Cares as an option?
Yes, if people would prefer to call Peoria Cares, which is such a great one-stop-shop for people who need to have certain things done or make reports on issues in the city, you can also call 494-CARE, which is 2273, and just ask to speak to Stacy Peterson, and they'll transfer you through.
Thank you, Stacy. I appreciate that. We've been, this has been a long time coming, and what you heard Stacy say is that she's going to be pulling from things, social media, that she's already making these posts. What my concern was that I didn't want there to be a lot of extra work for all the staff members we have, and so this won't be a lot of extra work because much of what you will see, she's already posting, and it will pull into this system. So I hope you, I hope it comes out and everybody loves it, but definitely we need to know when people would like to see this information. So if you've got those phone numbers, please respond. And lastly, in the recent weeks, we've seen the governor sign a bill consolidating a lot of the pension funds, and so to the city manager, my question is, when will the citizens of Peoria enjoy a reduction or removal of that wonderful police and fire pension fee that they pay now?
The pension fee was established by the city council for a three-year period, so we have it in place for the years 2019, 2020, and 2021.
The City of Peoria Council instituted it, and that means we can also remove it.
That's correct.
And at the point at which the state gets their act together and reduces what we are being charged, it would not, in fairness to our citizens, to continue to charge them that fee if we're not being impacted.
I would not expect, nor would I ask any of you to think, that we're going to see a reduction in the amount of contributions for pensions next year, the year after, or between now and the year 2040. That cost is going to continue to go up. It's how fast it goes up is what we're going to have to contend with.
So the citizens of Peoria who are listening will have some comfort that at such, at such time that we are receiving some relief, they will also see some relief, whenever that is.
If the, if the General Assembly decides to take up changing the way that the pensions are amortized, then we may see a reduction in the increase that we're contributing towards pensions, but I doubt that between now and 2040, we're going to see any reduction of any major impact in how much we're contributing towards public safety pensions.
Well, I'm optimistic. So for now, it'll still be there.
Yes.
But as I said, if at some point we see a reduction to us from the state of what we need to be filling the gap for, that our residents will also, whether that's 10 years from now or 15 years from now, they won't continue to pay this fee forever.
This fee is only, is only established for three years, yes.
Thank you.
Your bet.
Thank you. On that item, Mr. Manjore, I would recommend throughout the year, we're starting a new year, but I think throughout the year, we need to make this a focal update point for people along the way, because if there is the expectation that because they consolidated 650 downstate police and fire pension boards, that there was going to be a corresponding reduction in what our contribution is, it's not going to happen. So it is going to be in the next steps. I mean, this, it was a big move in that they've been trying to get that done for 20 years, and they never could. So the consolidate, the downstate consolidation was a good first step, but as the manager said, the actual amortization numbers that are the big numbers that really need to be adjusted are the ones that, that's going to be a heavy lift, and hopefully we'll get that done. I think it was mentioned at the last meeting when the manager updated us on this, that the implementation time on the downstate, the 650 downstate pensions, the implementation time by the state statute was 30 months to make that happen. So they're, they're hoping that they can get all those 650 downstate pensions consolidated in 30 months. So that's the expected time. As you can imagine, that it's going to take for all those different units to figure out where their, you know, where the different pensions were, what they were invested in, and so on. Okay.
And the last item I have, if Director Black can come forward. At our last meeting, we had quite a bit of conversation about the article that appeared regarding Taft, and we had indicated to our citizens that we were going to meet, the city was going to meet with PHA leadership, and we did that. And Director Black has responded to a request that I sent him, that the young lady who was featured in that article has not received the type of, in her opinion, have not received the type of response that she needs to receive. If you recall, it was a deplorable situation, and apparently, it, as of today, is still ongoing, and Director Black had made, had responded to me. So Director Black, if you can give us just an overview of what you received from PHA, for clarity for our residents, even though it's called Peoria Housing Authority, the City of Peoria doesn't run it, and so we do work in collaboration with PHA to try to assist them in any way we can, and when issues like this are raised, we don't, we take it very seriously. And Director Black has been in communication with PHA, so can we give a little bit of an update of, specifically about the plight of the young woman who was featured in the article?
Sure. Thank you, Councilwoman. So specifically, the article and one of the units that was mentioned in that article was a unit that city staff inspected in 2019. Almost said earlier this year, but it was last year at this point. We did find at that inspection that there were property maintenance code violations. We communicated that information to the Housing Authority. They resolved all of the items that we had indicated were violations, and upon reinspection, we found that there were no more city property maintenance code violations at that property. I understand that there may have been some other conversation between the tenant and the Housing Authority in terms of the opportunity to move into a different unit, or the opportunity to move into perhaps a different development that the Housing Authority operates. I am not privy to that conversation. As you indicated, the Housing Authority is not an arm of the City of Peoria, and I understand that the opportunity is there for that particular tenant, if she wanted to, to apply to move to a different location.
Make sure that our residents know that, our citizens know that we are very responsive to these kinds of issues, and as you heard from the director, we were working with this particular situation prior to the article coming out. Oftentimes, when these articles come out and show, just really put up a mirror to what we know is going on, it can sometimes help us move further, faster, in the correct direction. And in, being in that meeting with PHA, I can tell you that they have recommitted themselves to making sure that as long as Taft stands, that the residents will be able to enjoy the type of living that can be done there when you have buildings that are 50, 60, 70 years old until they can be replaced. But they were, are efforting to make sure that every, every one of those things that were mentioned in the article have, are being addressed. So thank you, Director Black. I appreciate you guys continuing to stay on top of this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Riegenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the council passing the Efficiency Network Letter of Authorization for the street lighting audit, and for those citizens that talk to us a lot about how dark certain streets are, particularly in some of the older neighborhoods, I think this is just a little bit of ray of hope. What we're going to be doing with this, it's an audit of the street lighting system, so it's not going to involve any upgrades at this point, but you can't upgrade something until you know what you've got. So this is a key first step for us to really get an understanding as to what the lighting is in some of these heritage neighborhoods. So I know I get a lot of calls and concerns, particularly in the East Bluff neighborhoods about that, and I'm sure other council members do in their areas as well. So I just wanted to make sure that the communication is headlined in such a way that unless you're looking for it and you're reading the agenda at home, you probably didn't realize it, but I think this is a great, going to be a great first step for our neighborhoods to hopefully see some improvement in that street lighting going forward. On another note, on January 3rd, we had a farewell party for Officer Kerry Hightower. He's been the residential police officer in the East Bluff for the last six years, one of the original, of the residential officers that took that position, and he's just become a real stalwart in the neighborhood, and I wish you could all have heard the kudos from the folks in the neighborhood as to the impact that he's had on the kids and the neighborhood in general. We're excited to welcome Officer Jerry James, and next Tuesday, since there's not a council meeting on the third Tuesday of the month, we'll be introducing Officer James at the East Bluff Community Center with an open house from 5:00 to 7:00. So everybody's welcome to do, to attend that from 5:00 to 7:00 next Tuesday to meet our new resident officer in the East Bluff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmembers here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Happy New Year to you and all my colleagues for 2020. A couple of questions for our city manager. The first question has to do with a pension fee that was voted on in 2018. I think the execution was not very good, and I'm sure you're aware, the number of phone calls all of us received because, knowing that when our constituent received their letter. Can you talk to us and to our constituent, to why they received their bill so late, where it was supposed to be a 2019 item?
So the, part of the reason for the delay in the mailing of the bills was the city is implementing a new financial system. We've had some challenges with ironing out some of the kinks with, within that implementation. It took us a little bit longer because we're utilizing the same billing system that we're utilizing for stormwater. We had to iron out some of the kinks as well with that because we're sending out two different bills for two different fees. So that was one of the reasons why the delay came out. I will say that what we have done is we have paid all of our obligations to the pension funds, so the pension funds have been paid. Now this, with the payment of the fee, it's just simply recouping the cost back to the general fund for those, for those expenses that we've had. We've had roughly between both the call center and, and calling here to City Hall, we've had about a little bit more than 100 calls a day have been coming in. We've been able to stay on top of all of the requests for any kind of appeal that people may have, and so far, you know, I think we've, based on the number of calls and the 40, nearly 47,000 bills that we've sent out, the call volume has not been that significantly great.
So the next bill for 2020, so our constituent will receive two bills this year, but what's the due date, or when is the next bill supposed to go out?
We haven't discussed that internally about when we'll be sending out the bill for 2020, so we haven't, we haven't discussed that yet.
When we voted on, it was supposed to be an October item, correct? It should go out this October if it...
You never voted on anything that's... You never voted on anything that set a date of when we would send that bill out?
Okay. But they'll receive another bill at some time in 2020.
They could, or we could keep it the same way that we've done it this year and just have them send it out in arrears. That's a, that's a discussion that we'll have.
Okay. And also, on a positive note, after studying the budget for 2019, year-to-date November, looks like we're in, in good shape. Looks like our surplus might be more than anticipated. Will we have some type of discussion about where that, if there's a surplus? If the December comes in the way, hopefully it'll come in. Will we have a discussion where that surplus should go for, like emergency fund? I talked last year about maybe starting a fund for the emergency flood. It seems like we have spent a lot of money every year that we, we don't really count on, or we don't put aside for. I mean, will we have discussion about any surplus, basically?
We can certainly have a conversation about where, where the final, at, at the end of 2019, when the, when the dust finally settles, what the numbers look like. When the year ends, if there's any, if in, in the general fund, there is more revenue than expenses, that usually just falls back into fund balance, and that sits there. We are still under the efforts to try and replenish our, our fund balances within the general fund in order to meet the stated goals of the, the city council. So that would be the plan, is that those dollars would go there. So that, while this is a good year, we still have to look at, at 2020, 2021, and 2022 to continue to try and tighten our belt and balance our budget.
So just to make sure, I understand what you just said, any surplus, number one goal is to refurbish the emergency fund? That's what, here?
To get us back to what our policy states, which is that we have 25% of the general funds on obligated fund balance and reserve.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Did you have an area that you wanted to spend it on?
Yes, sir. That would be noted.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on the issue related to the article in Taft with Director Ross. Because after that article came out, it seems that a lot of constituents seem to think that the PHA is exempt from our city ordinances. Can you clarify that that's not true and explain that a little bit?
Sure. Thank you, Councilwoman. The housing authority is not, for, for the properties that they own, they are not exempt from the city's property maintenance code, as with any other property in town. They do have their own inspectors. And so housing authority inspectors would go out and look at properties to determine if they met housing quality standard, which is a federal standard for the quality of housing. However, if we receive a complaint about a PHA-owned property, then we would follow up on that as we would with any other complaint about the condition of a property. We would make an inspection, we would write up a case report, we would work with the owner of the property, which in this case would be that, the housing authority, in order to get that issue resolved.
And we do do that, correct?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Another question has arisen, and I don't even know if we're requiring not, any property owners of rental property to fill out that self-inspection form. There's been, it, it was going to be a policy, and then I think it may have gotten pulled back. Can you just clarify what the status of that is and whether PHA is required to comply with that component?
Sure. On that specific item, the housing authority is exempt from the registration, the inspection form requirements. That was part of the ordinance that the council adopted many years ago. There were certain exemptions in there. The housing authority is one of those exemptions. In terms of other properties in town, you are correct that we've made some changes in order to try and streamline and reduce the burden on investor owners of, of rental property. So for 2020, the form will have to be filled out if there is a new tenant in the property. It does not have to be turned in to the city with the registration paperwork. And it does not have to be done on an annual basis. So if someone has the same tenant in the unit, and they have an existing form, they don't have to do a new one, and they don't have to turn it in with their registration paperwork. It just needs to be available. If we do get a complaint about that unit, we would want to make sure that that form was there and that the tenant had seen it.
As a follow-up, I know when the rental registration and inspection ordinance was first adopted in, I think it was 1995, the PHA was not exempt. And they were required, when we used to do systematic rental inspections, to go through that. So I guess I'm wondering, as from a historic point of view, when did the council exempt the PHA from that ordinance?
That I don't know off the top of my head, but I would be happy to provide a report back to the council on the changes to the registration requirements since the mid-1990s.
Just for PHA, and I guess if you would include in that report back, if we were to consider adding PHA to not exempt them from some of the requirements, what that would entail, what the burden would be? If you could include that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional new business? Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just, there's been a rumor going around that Sterling Avenue is going to be down to a two-lane road here. And I know we've had some conversation going on by email, Director Black. Could you make some comments on that, please?
Thank you, Councilman. I, I think what's happening is there is some confusion in the community as to the purpose of the city's thoroughfare plan, which is, has gone through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and has gone through the Transportation Commission, and at this point is pending. It would come before the council at your next meeting, at the end of, of this month. So what the thoroughfare plan does is it outlines classifications for streets, everything from local streets up to interstates. And then it has specifications for those types of streets. So interstates are so wide, and local streets are obviously less wide. And then are there pedestrian accommodations? Are there bicycle accommodations? What else would, what would be involved in the, within that right-of-way area? So in terms of, of the thoroughfare plan, and I'll certainly have more to say about it two weeks from tonight when the document is before you, but there's nothing in there that says Sterling Avenue will be reduced to a two-lane road. There's a classification for Sterling, which is actually set by the state of Illinois. It's set by IDOT. It's not a local designation. And within that designation, there are, there are specifications for that type of street. And I apologize that I don't have this in front of me, but there are specifications for that type of street that come out of the engineering documents that the city council has, or that the city has been following for many years, in terms of how a street that is designated like this and carries this amount of traffic would be constructed. So all of that said, the thoroughfare plan is, is simply a plan. It's a planning document. As far as I know, and, you know, I don't, I think that the Public Works Director and the city manager would back me up on this, as far as I know, there is nothing in the city's long-range plan or budget to reconstruct Sterling Avenue. So Sterling Avenue will probably remain as it is for many, many, many years to come.
Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, that rumor got out there and took on a life of its own here. So thank you for those comments here. And that report will be coming to the council at our next meeting, correct? For us, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any additional new business? I'm seeing no lights. Madam Clerk?
We would be at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
Citizens to address, name for the record, five-minute speaking limit. We have Mr. Hippie first.
Well, the last time I was told, I didn't make my case very good, so I hope I can do a better job this time. Seems like the city council here forgot a lot of their responsibility to the people in this city. Got a state constitution that we're supposed to be going by. I think every one of you has basically given, should have given an oath. We look at the way the states ran. We lost 51,000 people last year. The year before that, we lost 45,000 people. The year before that, we lost 40,000 people. From what my, I can get on my records, from 2010 until now, Peoria has lost, Peoria County, which includes the city of Peoria, has lost almost 6,000 people. But yet, all we do is every time I hear or come to a meeting, it's we're going to raise a tax on this, we're going to create a new fee, we're going to take something away from the people, we're going to put more requirements on the people. It's not working. It's not working at all. Got to do something different. This state, this state is not making no example of anything, of prosperity, or, or trying to encourage people to do something. And this city is in, running in the same steps as the state is. We can't keep going on. Every time a new tax comes up to the people, that's stealing money from people that are trying to make a living and trying to live with what they've got. We can't continue to keep doing this over and over and over. I don't know where you think it's going to go. This, from my understanding, this city is in a half a billion dollars in debt. I think it was 330 million in pension debt, and I think the general fund was like 100 million or some, I, I might have my records wrong, but this city's in debt. And, and I can understand trying to have a positive note on this, but until the state constitution and the retirement pension clause is changed, there's no relief coming. There's no relief in sight. We're making, we're, we're making legalization of pot and gambling as a way of collecting revenue in order to cover up compensa, or incompetency of this state. Every time a tax comes up, it just, it just puts another nail in the coffin that it's incompetent. We're not running anything the way it should be. There's nobody in this town that's looking forward to anything. You get, you get fees sent to you in the mail, making up a pension fund. What do we have? What do we got out here to look forward to? I retired two years ago, and I got to pay out of my pocket something that I don't have. A Chicago teacher up there, when they retire after 30 years, gets $76,000 a year for a pension. I've worked 49 years of my life. I retired early, and I get $1,100 a month to live on, and this is what I get, is new fees, new taxes. And people are leaving the city. When people leave, you've got to take, take that burden and put it on us. You're not doing us any justice at all. There's no encouragement for people to stay in Illinois. My daughter left three weeks ago because she couldn't make it in this town. I've got friends that are leaving because they can't make it in this state. Nothing is, if, nothing is working as it is now. It's got to change. Somebody's got to do something different. And if you got to go back to the old ways of doing something, so be it. But every time I turn around, we got, we got, we got a mayor in New York crying to the federal government, they need money to take care of their burden, their debt, and their failure. Does that not tell you something? If you just, if you got to depend on the federal government to bail you out, to do something in your city, you're doing something wrong. It's called grant prostitution, because it's so easy to get federal money to make up for what you're not doing properly in this town on your own. I thank you, and I went to Manuel High School, and I'm proud of that, too.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We have an executive session.
Council Peterson?
We have executive session to discuss pending litigation pursuant to 65 ILCS 120-2C11, employee performance pursuant to 65 ILCS 120-2C1, enclosed session minutes pursuant to 65 ILCS 120-2C21.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to go into executive session. Councilman Seer, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously, and we have a motion to adjourn. Councilman Seer, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Please cast your ballots. And that motion passes unanimously. We would like to thank Kathy Reinerson at WCBU, as well as Cable Channel 22, for participating in this evening's meeting. We are adjourned.